Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Help for the purpose of transacting general business of township. Today's date is May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Is also being offered in a live streaming feature. Do we have any zoomers, Brandon? The two zoomers. All right. So welcome. Thank you for being here as well as our live participants. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting. But instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mike, if you could summarize any public comment we received prior to this evening?
Sure. We had one public comment submitted before the end of the day. It was from a Windmore resident who wanted to express support for Mr. May as a replacement for the Commissioner in Ward Seven.
Great. Thank you, Mike. This time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection to honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote. We have five commissioners with us this evening. Commissioner Maxwell is not able to be here. And of course, as you know, the Ward Seven Chair is vacant, you know, to be addressed later on in the agenda. And I would like to acknowledge former Commissioner Bob Gillies is also with us this evening. Thank you for being here. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three workshop meeting to discuss the acquisition of real estate and three active litigation matters. And a couple announcements. One is a public safety announcement regarding mini bikes. I think you see it especially in Orland in this time of the year. So on behalf of the Springfield Township Police Department, Board of Commissioners would like to remind all residents that the operation of motorized, non-licensed vehicles is prohibited upon public streets and sidewalks. Unlicensed vehicles present a public safety hazard for their operators as well as their other pedestrians, cyclists, and properly licensed motor vehicles. If you observe an unlicensed motorized vehicle such as a golf cart, mini bike, or scooter being operated on a public street or sidewalk, please contact the Springfield Township Police Department by dialing nine-one-one and report the location of the illegal activity and a description of the vehicle and operator. A second announcement is about Ready Monco. The Ready Monco Notification System delivers alerts about severe weather and other important events in Montgomery County to one or more devices of your choice. Residents who register for the service can select from emails, text messages, push notifications, and/or a traditional telephone call to receive information about emergencies and disasters that may affect them at home, school, or workplace in Montgomery County. Residents are encouraged to set up their Ready Monco account at monco.org. Excuse me, monco PA dot org. And at this time, this time, I would like to invite Heidi Shiver, President of Birdtown, Pennsylvania, to join Commissioner Peter Wilson in front of the room to present the Township's Birdtown, Pennsylvania Certificate of Participation and one of four street signs marking Springfield Township as a Birdtown, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Good, good, good.
So I just wanted to thank Springfield Township for being supportive of Birdtown since two thousand and seventeen. And with this certificate, I'd like to present this to you to thank you for the passing a new Birdtown resolution, recognizing the new leadership for Birdtown, and also the recommitment to the program. I really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with Brandon. And I really can thank all of you for your support for the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're pleased to be part of it.
Great, awesome.
It adds a lot to the community. And I understand you were presenting some signs for us, the new signs.
Yes, yes. Look forward to seeing them on your streets. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Let me get another picture.
We have like a nice photo here.
Yeah.
Everyone, that'd be great. Brandon, can you take the photo?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Mr. Cobb, do you want to join us?
Yeah.
Mr. Garrity and everyone. It's a great opportunity to have a nice photo with all of you.
Only elected officials.
Elected officials.
Just do the elects.
Try. Where is that? We're supposed to be the bird. Good. Nice to meet you again. You're doing well, Rick.
Oh, no, no. Never heard that one before.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, I'd also like to announce that all residents are invited to join Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission this Saturday, May thirteenth, beginning at nine AM at Mermaid Park for a free guided bird walk led by local bird enthusiast Andy Winger. Come see the park's recent environmental restoration and new walking trail. Mermaid Park is located at eight hundred Mermaid Lane in Windmore.
What did I say? Oh, Winger. Just realized that now.
Oh.
Winger, wings.
Wing, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Okay, we are really cooking with gas now. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. The conclusion of the committee reports, public comment will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. And if you do, come to the microphone, please start with your name and address. Okay, I think I think we're good. We will now get into the committee reports. Which I think I am starting with. Okay, first item is regarding ordinance nine seven three. I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number nine seven three to amend the code of the Township of Springfield by rewriting in its entirety, Chapter sixty-nine, Police, to eliminate a residency requirement that is no longer observed and to establish the Springfield Township Police Department to reserve the public peace, enforce the criminal laws and penal ordinances, and to protect the life and property of the citizens of Springfield Township. The ordinance is required as one of three hundred and seventy current standards established by the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission in order for the police department to be recognized as an accredited agency. As noted last month, accreditation is a self-initiated process of adopting and maintaining state and/or nationally recognized law enforcement standards, policies, and procedures to ensure accountability and transparency that enhances confidence and trust in law enforcement and the communities they serve. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote. Second item I have this evening is Resolution sixteen oh six regarding police detail fees. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen oh six, the resolution increasing the current police special detail rate from ninety dollars per hour to a hundred and twenty dollars per hour for each officer. The Board of Commissioners desires to set the special detail rate so that it is consistent with the cost of providing the contracted police service so that there is no cost to those taxpayers who have not requested the service. The new fee shall be effective for all services rendered on or after July first, two thousand and twenty-three. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote. And my last item, so you can hear me stop talking. The Springfield Township American Recovery Plan Act, also known as ARPA Spending Plan, consists of fifteen projects across four expenditure categories, including vehicle and equipment replacement, parks and recreation improvements, environmental stormwater improvements, and contributions to the three fire companies that will be used for the replacement of fire apparatus. In order to memorialize the Township's ARPA contribution to the three fire companies, a beneficiary agreement has been created to formalize the transaction by establishing requirements for record keeping, a timeline for the dissemination of funds, and the specified purpose of the contribution. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a beneficiary agreement with the Windmore Hose Company for the distribution of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to be used for the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-three Rosenbauer Rescue Pumper. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote. And that concludes my report, so we will go on to. What the heck will we go to? We'll go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have one motion this evening, and if it's okay because Commissioner Maxwell is not here, I would be happy to read his report along with mine.
That'd be great.
Great. All right. So here we go. First, concerning the land development at nine oh two Pleasant Avenue. On or about November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, Patrick Deacon, owner of the property located at nine oh two Pleasant Avenue, Windmore, filed a subdivision land development application with Springfield Township seeking preliminary approval to subdivide the subject property in order to create four separate parcels upon which three new single-family dwellings are to be constructed. The ninety-day land development review period imposed by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is currently scheduled to expire on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the applicant has submitted a letter granting an extension of time to the Board of Commissioners to take formal action on the plan. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners accept a letter from Patrick J. Deacon, received April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, extending the ninety-day subdivision land development plan review period up to and including June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The extension of time will provide the applicant the opportunity to revise their land development plans to be in compliance with the Springfield Township Code. So that is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Okay, next. Next motion concerns the two thousand and twenty-three highway resurfacing program. On Thursday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, bids are received for the Township's two thousand and twenty-three highway resurfacing and milling program. Bids are received from three contractors, General Asphalt Paving Company, Glasgow Inc., and James D. Morrissey, Inc. The bids range from a low of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars to a high of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars, based upon three thousand, two hundred and forty-five tons of applied in-place asphalt and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five square yards of road milling. All bids exceeded the township's budget estimates due to rising petroleum costs. As a result, the township intends to apply a portion of its unused winter maintenance budget to complete the work. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to General Asphalt Paving Company of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, to mill and resurface specified township streets for their combined low bid price of one hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents per ton for resurfacing and three dollars and thirty-six cents per square yard for road milling for a total estimated price of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote and mill away.
Okay, and next, I'm reading a motion concerning sale of used vehicles. Section one oh five, one point two of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code sets forth the regulations for the sale of township property, personal property via electronic auction. The Springfield Township Fleet Supervisor has requested permission to sell a two thousand and twelve international street sweeper that was recently replaced with a two thousand and twenty-three Freightliner Street Sweeper. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of a two thousand and twelve international street sweeper with seventy-three thousand miles and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-one hours of service via the municipal online public auction site. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Okay, and then. All right, this is my last motion concerning National Public Works Week. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen oh seven, a resolution designating May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Public Works Week and commending the performance and contributions of the individual employees of the Springfield Township Public Works Department. The Springfield Township Public Works Department is responsible for the operation and maintenance of all public facilities and infrastructure, including solid waste and recycling collection, highway maintenance, snow and ice removal, storm sewer, conveyance systems, public buildings and recreation areas, and all township-owned vehicles and equipment. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I would just say for folks, you know, if you see any of our Public Works guys, give them a thank you. We've got like some of the best in the biz. You know, the township was lucky enough to have such continuity of leadership, especially in that department with Don Sirianni and Director Hammer has done a great job since he's been here. So it's a lot of people talk about how good Public Works is in Springfield. So, you know, thank you, guys, if you see him. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Thank you, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Standish. We will go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a recycling report, and I'm pleased to announce that during the month of April, two thousand and twenty-three, Springfield Township residents recycled sorry, a hundred and fifty point two tons of material with a household or participation rate of seventy percent. The net cost for the month was twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-six cents. Also want to remind, the Commissioners want to remind all residents to remove all packing material from cardboard boxes before placing the material out for collection. Packing materials such as plastic, air packs, bubble wrap, plastic bags, polystyrene, styrofoam packaging are contaminants and must be removed from cardboard boxes before they can be recycled. Cardboard boxes that contain, that contain packing materials will be considered trash and disposed of accordingly. So that's very important. I'd also like to mention, Mr. President, that this Saturday, in addition to the, whoop, the, the, the bird outing, the Township Environmental Advisory Commission is having a native plant sale at the library starting at ten AM this, this Saturday, May the thirteenth. And we have a nice selection of native plants of all shapes and sizes, and, and they're all priced very, very competitively, so we, we hope they will be picked up, paid for, and, and planted as soon as possible to assist our, our native wildlife. So that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, especially for that recycling tip of the month.
Yes.
They've proven to be very helpful. Okay, we will go to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee. No, we won't. We will go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the April check reconciliation in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents in the May bill listing in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote.
All right, next, regarding Resolution number sixteen oh eight, Ward Seven Commissioner vacancy. On April twenty-fifth and May eighth of this year, the Board of Commissioners met with four individuals interested in filling a vacancy in the position of Township Commissioner, Ward Seven. The vacancy was created via the resignation of Eddie T. Graham on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and formally accepted by the Board of Commissioners at its April twelfth meeting. In accordance with Section five thirty of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, the board has thirty days to fill the vacancy once it has been accepted. So therefore, I move that we discuss the vacancy and consider the four candidates at option.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cobb. I would entertain a motion.
I would be pleased to make a motion to nominate Brendan May for that position.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A sec.
There a second? Any questions or comments?
A quick comment. So I had a appeal to the board on Monday that we take into account sort of a bipartisanship consideration for this appointment. I view sort of partisanship right up there with really the, the biggest threats, not only in our own civil discourse locally, but certainly nationally. And I know that probably we all share a certain fear and a feeling that democracy right now is sort of under threat. And I view partisanship a part of that threat. I think partisanship, when allowed to fester, really allows, it undermines people's confidence in the process. And when people are undermined, when people don't have confidence in democracy, I mean, I think that's when we see cynicism creep in, and I think that I just think it's only gotten worse in, you know, my short tenure of sort of paying attention. And so I do, I did urge and I do urge this board to consider the short tenure of this term. You know, we're looking at nominating someone for a couple of months. There will be an election in November. And consequently, I think it affords us an opportunity for a gesture. A gesture to reach across the aisle, reach across, you know, to maybe to a party that's a little bit different and, and and do a small part to maybe help alleviate that. Outside of that, as I expressed on Monday, I do think we had four fabulous candidates that all would bring something to the position and would all, I think, represent Ward Seven very well. I do think that Ms. Thomas, her qualifications were just a notch above for me. You know, she's been in the township since nineteen sixty-three, with the exception of a short five-year tenure. She has raised daughters in the township, grandchildren in the township. She currently has a granddaughter at the high school. It's a perspective that frankly, we don't have represented on the board tonight. Her volunteer work in the township, and if I just could read from her submitted resume, includes, she is a volunteer with the Township's Youth Aid Panel. She is a representative of the Community Ambulance Association, an association that she was a volunteer in up until its most recent dissolution, we brought in Ambler. Decades, again, representation, I think, in emergency, emergency services that is also missed on this board. She's a founding member and a moderator for Warriors Watch, which honors active-duty service members, veterans, and first responders. She's a treasurer of the Friends of the Forgotten, POW MIA, Missing in Action Awareness Organization, and she's a member of the Blue Comet Motorcycle Club, which that alone is something I'd want to hear more about. And above all those other things, Ms. Thomas was and has been a fixture at our meetings. So she has continuously shown up just to listen. And that's always, I've always just really taken a very profound respect in that because they're not necessarily, she's not here for particular issues that she wants to speak on. She just comes because she wants to know what's going on in the township. And again, I can honestly say over the years, she's probably been here for half the meetings, if not more, and and for all of those reasons, again, I think we had four excellent candidates. But because I just don't, I don't want her political affiliation to disqualify her eminent merits, because again, I think she adds something to this board and diversity to this board that is missed. And, and I think the partisanship thing is an important consideration as well. And so for those reasons, I would actually like to nominate Jane Thomas.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I think I just think it's fair to say that recognize, I recognize and appreciate Ms. Tom's contributions as a attendee and the attention she's given in civic duty that she feels she'd like to serve. And I think I agree that all the candidates have something different to offer. But nonetheless, you know, regardless of party, I find Brendan May to be highly qualified. I look forward to serving alongside him, and I would like to continue to support Mr. May for the vacancy.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate what I said when, Monday night, which is we continue to be blessed in the township where we have four people willing to step up, four qualified people that are willing to serve in this role, just like we do in all of our advisory boards and commissions when there's vacancy, the township has tons of people that are, have skills and experiences, so it really speaks, speaks well to, to our township and our community. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
This is motion for.
What did you do?
This is motion for.
The motion was to nominate Brendan May. You made the motion.
Yes, okay.
We had a second.
Yeah.
We had a comment, and now we're voting on it.
Oh, okay, okay.
So all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please record a four one vote. Mr. Cobb, is that the end of your report?
No. Next up is a personnel policy manual change. And I move that the Board of Commissioners amend that the Springfield Township Personnel Policy Manual by observing the Juneteenth holiday as well as a modified work schedule from Memorial Day to Labor Day. The Juneteenth holiday will be observed annually on June nineteenth, and the modified work schedule will require employees to work one additional hour weekdays from Monday through Thursday, from eight AM to eleven thirty AM Friday. The changes apply only to those employees who are not represented by a collective bargaining agreement. That's my motion.
If you have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I think maybe we would like to emphasize that that is not an additional holiday. That's just an additional holiday that can be selected within the number already agreed.
That's correct. It basically is a transfer of one holiday for another.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? We didn't vote yet, right?
You did not.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five zero vote.
Next, regarding the zoning hearing board agenda for the month of May. The zoning hearing board will meet on Monday, May twenty-second at seven PM in this room, where they'll hear the following applications. The first from Tasia Kamler, owner of the property located at nine eleven Hunter's Lane in Orland. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for the construction of a one hundred square foot accessory building two feet, eight inches from the side property line. The required side yard setback is seven feet. The proposed accessory building is a single-story structure under twelve feet in height, and that property is owned within the residential district of Ward Seven. Next application is from Catherine and Joseph Dingly, owners of the property located at five oh two Lorraine Avenue owners of the property located at five oh two Lorraine Avenue in Orland. The applicants are requesting a variance to allow for the construction of a seven hundred square foot, single-story addition and a hundred and fifty-four square foot deck to the rear of the home that is within the limits of the floodplain as defined by FEMA. The property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward Three of the township. The next application is from Robertson and Ferry Limited Partners, owners of the property located at thirteen oh one Mermaid Lane in Winmore. This applicant is requesting special exemption to revise the existing non-conforming use from flower-growing and arrangement design facility with retail sales to snowplow storage facility. And the alternative variance has also been requested. An interpretation of the term accessory building and accessory use in the alternative variance has been requested for the term accessory building accessory use, and variance is also requested to allow the storage container labeled number eight, number nine, to be seventeen point eight feet from the side property line instead of the required twenty feet. An additional variance has been requested to allow storage containers number one, two to be ten point two feet from the rear property line instead of the required twenty-five feet. And a variance has also been requested to allow for the salt shed to remain at twenty point nine feet in height instead of the maximum permitted height of twenty feet. In addition, the variance has been requested to allow for the currently installed fencing to remain eight feet in height instead of the maximum permitted height of five, of six feet. And all the relief is requested is defined within the Springfield Township zoning warrants. This property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward Five. Finally, application of St. Genevieve School, Church and School, the owner of the property located twelve thirty-seven Bethlehem Pike in Flower Town. This applicant proposes to install a temporary classroom on the site, seeking a variance to allow the existing parking layout on the property to remain as currently installed. A variance has been requested. The approval of the requested variances would allow the proposed classroom to be installed without additional parking stalls being added to the site. And that property is owned within the B Residential District and the C Residential District of Ward One. Copies of the application packets are available for review in the Community Development Office during normal business hours. And again, those four petitions will be heard on Monday, May twenty-second at seven p.m. And finally, regarding the one application submitted by Robertson Ferry Limited Partnership involving the property located thirteen oh one Mermaid Lane, I do move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Office of the Township Solicitor to attend the May twenty-second meeting of the zoning hearing board and any subsequent meetings involving the subject property in order to oppose the multiple variances that have been requested in order to permit a snowplow equipment storage contractor yard to operate on the premises. Again, that property is located within the B Residential Zoning District. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, excuse me, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a five-zero vote.
And that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will go to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzavon.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Carrie Bachella to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Mrs. Bachella's new three-year term of service shall expire May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-six. Shall I separate these? I have to.
I would separate.
Separate them. So that's my first motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to comment that Carrie's been just such an asset. As, as many of you know, she also is pivotal in running Community Day. She has been an excellent contributor, and she also serves as liaison to the Rex Center Advisory Committee. It's been excellent having her and working with her. So I'm sure she's excited to serve again.
Ditto. All right.
No vote, yep.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a five-zero vote.
In addition, at the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Board of Commissioners created a non-voting student representative position on the Parks and Recreation and Recreation Center Advisory Committees. The purpose of adding a student representative to the committees is to offer a youth perspective to new and existing programs and recreational needs. Therefore, I am excited to move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Asher Dogren of Winmore as a non-voting student representative to the Parks and Recreation and Recreation Center Advisory Committees. Mr. Dogren is presently a sophomore at Springfield Township High School and shall serve through his senior year. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that, you know, Mr. Dogren and I met at a lunch and learned that he went out of his way to attend on trails, and he was eloquent, was a great leader at that lunch and learn, leading a group of folks to advising on a map, a trail map on site, and I'm eager to include a young voice, especially one with such leadership at both of these committees.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a five-zero vote.
Before I move on to the next motion concerning Memorial Day, yay. Before I move on to that, I also wanted to recognize that a committee member for the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Joe Ferraro, who is also athletic director at the high school, his term is up, and we're awaiting the school board or the school district to assign someone else to that post. But he has been particularly useful at Parks and, the Parks and Recreation Committee, specifically because he could answer a lot of questions regarding how our services overlap and how they differ. And I really want to recognize my appreciation for his service. So just a note there. And now I move on to a motion about Memorial Day. I move that the Board of Commissioners grant permission to the Arthur V Savage American Legion Post of Winmore to utilize Veterans Park for a Community Day event following the annual Memorial Day parade and to serve beer at the park as a part of the event. The permission is granted subject to the following. One, the American Legion Post shall secure a permit for use of the park. Secondly, the American Legion Post shall hire a police detail to be at the park while beer is served. And three, the American Legion Post shall secure an insurance rider for the day's events, naming Springfield Township as an additional insured. Memorial Day, two thousand and twenty-three, will be observed on Monday, May twenty-ninth. Well, first of all, let me just make that motion, and I'll make the announcement. That is my motion to grant permission to the post.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a five-zero vote.
Great. Before I conclude my report, I just would like to talk about Memorial Day here. Memorial Day, two thousand and twenty-three, will be observed on Monday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The parade will begin at nine thirty a.m. at the American Legion Post on Elm Avenue and Willow Grove Avenue. Following the parade, a remembrance ceremony will be held at eleven a.m. at the Veterans Park Memorial Area along Willow Grove Avenue. The Community Day activities will be held from approximately eleven forty-five a.m. to three p.m. on the lower fields at Veterans Park. I'm thrilled to, to be asked to participate. Commander Marlin, if you're listening, we'd be happy to. We attend every year. As you know, my family has, is full of veterans, and we're looking forward to participating. I also want to take this opportunity to announce to the community members at both the behest of Winmore Hose and on my own, knowing that the post puts on this event at their cost. Both letters recently went out, I think in the past month, for contributions, and just want to encourage those to support both the post's Memorial Day event and also Winmore Hose's first fundraising drive of the year, both letters of which recently were mailed. Both really survive on your contributions and would appreciate it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Retzavon.
I just have just one more item on that because I got a, I got a message from Jimmy Marlin, and I'll read it. He says, also, please pass the word to all Commissioners, all Commissioners to join in the parade. It's been too many years since our township leadership has been in it. It's a good thing to be seen. So anybody who wants to join in, you know.
I'll give you a call.
Thank you. But this time, the Board is once again open to receiving public comment, both good, bad, excited, and boring. So again, there's a reminder, if you come to the microphone, please state your name and address.
Bob Gillies, two thirteen Woods Road. I want to thank you for the opportunity to put my name in, and I think Mr. Cobb gave a great position, and I think that might have been the best choice that could have been. I think we took an opportunity to tip the scale, a little bit of a current election going on, and I don't think that was the appropriate choice. I think Mr. Cobb had the, the great argument of who should have been selected. But thank you, and I think you should, you know, at least let everybody know who the people were, that not myself, don't worry about it, but the other people who did put their name in and thank them for it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Jane Thomas, E. Dan, Rhode Island. I thank you also again for your consideration and congratulations to Mr. May. Also, with Memorial Day things, the middle school has a program on May thirtieth at two o'clock where Memorial Day is explained. They have the POW MIA Missing Man Table. They replace the flags, and it's a really good thing for the kids, and anybody can come who's available.
Thank you.
Hello, Brendan May, eight four zero six Cobden Road. I just want to thank everybody for the consideration. And, you know, I'm really honored to take on the position at this point in time. I would also like to thank Mr. Cobb for the comments that he provided. And, you know, I think it is something really important in this day and age that we are able to reach across the aisle. You know, tonight, you know, may not have been the explicit moment, but it is something that I would like to carry as I hold the position. Because it is just really important that we, as a community, come together, that we serve everybody in the community, and that we're all able to get along and, and, you know, work together to make sure that we keep this great township that we have here. So thank you to the Board and everyone, and thank you to everybody else who put their hat in the ring. You know, it is just nice that we have so many people willing to step forward to do the job in this township. And, you know, we wouldn't have this great community without it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to confirm what Mr. Gillies said, you know, the, obviously, the three candidates just spoke, Brendan May, Bob Gillies, and Jane Thomas, who had all interviewed at that April meeting, and then Mary Ellen Reeves, who had travel considerations, interviewed this past Monday, and she can't be here this evening, but those were the four candidates that expressed interest for the appointment. Any other public comment?
Asher Dogren, eight six one four Patton Road. I just want to thank all the Commissioners tonight and say that it's an honor to have been appointed as the student representative. I love my school. I've been the president of my class for two years now, and I really look forward to bringing my leadership skills to the table and representing the students of Springfield Township High School and working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. And we're, we're glad to have you, too, and we appreciate you stepping up the serve. Thank you.
And now there's competition, but it's cool that Asher's also one of my constituents.
There you go. Any other comment? If no other comment is ready, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make that motion.
You know, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a five-zero vote. We are adjourned.